Justin, will you lead us in our invocation?
Absolutely. Please pray with me. Terribly, Father, God, we thank you for today. We thank you for the opportunity to be here. I pray that you would be with our city leaders tonight. I pray that you would give them wisdom. God, I also ask that you would be with our citizens this week. Lord, as the heat is high, I pray that you would give us protection during this. I pray that you would just bless us with health. Tonight, I pray that you bless us with wisdom, and we just thank you. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Misty, you want to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our all.
All right, we'll go ahead and convene our meeting. Start with roll call. Misty Cottle?
Here.
Jeff Upton?
Here.
James Rogmorton?
Here.
Marty Lindebury?
John Collins?
Here.
Dina McKnight?
Here.
Don Rollins?
Here.
Jimmy Condon?
Here.
Our city attorney and city clerk are both present. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes that need to be made? So one change I would like to make is moving the fire department report up to number one in front of the planning commission report. The chief's got somewhere to be. Anyone have any objections to that?
No.
Can we get a motion?
A motion.
Was that a second?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the change. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from May 10th, 2022. Do we have any changes that need to be made to those? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the meeting minutes. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is our public forum. Do we have anyone that would like to address the mayor and council tonight? Okay, we'll close the public forum and move into our business reports. Up first, Chief Myers.
Do you want those lights on above your beds?
Not really, it just adds heat.
Thank you for allowing me to move up a little bit. Really not much. We jumped a lot in our call volume. You can see we went up to 100 calls for last month, which is not unforeseen. We have done that maybe once, twice, and all the time that I've been there, but probably going to start being a little more normal, I'm afraid. Had four guys we sent off to search and rescue class to get their basics, this and that, so a little extra there. We have one that's going to be going to EMT starting sometime this next month, which is another big plus for us. Of course, our buzzer out tomorrow, nine to three, community center. We want to try to reach our goal of 45, and we would like to exceed that by a lot. Anybody that's available, please come out. Big shout out, the Uptons gave us some doors that they had laying around that we can use for our training. Great big help to us, saved us from purchasing things. Nice record service allowed us to come to his facility, cut up some cars, do some extrication training, which is just invaluable. Big, huge, huge shout out to both of them for letting us do, give us stuff like that so we can still continue training, so. With 100 calls, we actually managed to squeeze in spraying kids a couple times, so other than that, that's all I got.
Any questions for Chief Myers?
So just real quick, Chief, I wanted to highlight, looking over your reports, you're a fire department, right?
I believe so.
Yep. So on this report, my point is, we ask a lot of you that we don't realize, that we take for granted. If you look at the fire report, there's not one fire that they fought in 100 calls.
Which is great.
It's great. The point is, the fire department is doing a lot of things outside of fighting fires. I mean, you guys, you've got downed power lines, smoke detectors, vehicle accidents, something on here that's either an overpressure, an explosion, or an overheat, or other.
It's hard to figure out what to turn on some of those things, but...
That's kind of what I suspect.
Gas heaters get to leaking, yeah. Somebody's tree limb down the yard, better than they can't get it out of the yard themselves, they'll call us. We know how to do it, so.
So I think that just goes, I'm trying to prove or make the point that the fire department, they're there for fires, obviously, but their training goes well beyond fighting fires. Besides providing community services like spraying kids that they seem to enjoy so much, they are responding to a lot of calls throughout town for, I mean, you look at that and it's like, good lord, how do you train somebody to be prepared to go to, I mean, we've got electrical stuff on here, water and ice-related rescues, I'm not sure where the ice came from, but they are witnessing a lot of different things.
We're in Arkansas.
So just want to point that out and show a little appreciation for the stuff other than fires that you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Walter, planning commission report.
Evening. It's a little longer report than usual. We had our regular planning commission meeting on the 19th last month. We seeded a new commissioner, so we're down to just one vacancy. Josh Uper joined us. We had an easy lot line adjustment. There wasn't much left to that planning commission. We scheduled the public hearing for the rezoning of 79 Main, that's the block building that's the old pump house for the river, from agriculture to commercial, and that'll be this Thursday at 6:00, so we'll be meeting as the planning, or the board of zoning adjustment handles rezones. So we'll be meeting at that, holding a public hearing, so please be here for that. And then we had our special meeting with Juliet Ritchie on the 23rd, and we got our updated map of the future land use, which is zoning areas, it's not specific districts where that doesn't do zoning at all, it just gives a general overview. Then we discussed the master street plan, talking about a new exit on the interstate, possibly a connection over to 265, and then how maybe to ease congestion north and south if McKnight starts filling up, and if we can handle that with just interconnecting neighborhoods or actually try to figure out a road to go through there. That's about it on special. We scheduled our next special meeting on the 23rd at 6:30 here, that'll be with Juliet Ritchie. And then our regular meeting, again, coming up on the 16th, so this Thursday. Before that, we'll have our public hearing at 6:00, and then our regular meeting will be at 6:30. And that so far, all we have for it is a submission for a variance application on the lot that the proposed RV park was maybe going in, so there'll be some planned discussion on that. But really, it's just to see whether or not it holds merit to move forward to a public hearing, so we won't really be discussing anything else. And that's about it. If you have any questions?
Any questions?
I put a lot in there.
I think the address, you gave my address.
Oh, your 79?
Yes.
Okay. It's 85, okay. It's a bit odd on the map.
No questions for Walter? Okay, buckle up. So I have provided each of you with a draft of the future land use categories. This is one of the things that we went over in our special planning meeting. And I just, I know there's some confusion based around how this works, future land use versus zoning, and Walter pointed out that this is not zoning, this is future land use. And so I wanted to bring it to your attention because we're likely to get some questions about this when we take this to the public. So as an example, if you flip through to about the fourth page, fifth page, we have a future land use description of walkable neighborhood. And Juliet's taken some pictures of West Fork to kind of show what the idea is there, and we have a description. So what we're, some of the basis behind planning is to provide buffers between your heavy-use, commercial, your industrial, your single-family residential, and your high-density residential. Okay, so we are trying to come in, we don't have a blank slate as far as the city, to design these buffers. So what we're trying to do is design future land use that is in line with what we currently have, but also gives the planning and the council some guidance when somebody comes in and they want to, you know, who knows what they want to put in. We've seen that happen, things that we haven't planned for, event centers, manufacturing facilities, RV parks. We're not prepared for some of that necessarily. So this future land is saying, hey, this is kind of what you have here, these are the things that we see morphing into that. So just because it's single-family doesn't mean that we can't put a law office in or, you know, things of that nature that would typically be commercial, but they're not heavy-traffic, high-use commercials. So I wanted to give you guys a copy of this so that you could kind of walk through it and see what we're, how we're looking at this. We've got a walkable neighborhood in here that, again, includes a little bit more commercial in it, a downtown mixed use. Some of these things we have no need for right now, right? Totally agree with that. However, we could at a future date, and so we're just trying to get some of that in place, try to work through some of that now instead of waiting until somebody comes in and asks for something, and we're scratching our heads of what to do, turn them down or try to, you know?
Let it happen and then try to work around that later.
So anyway, I would ask that you guys kind of look through that. Juliet's done a good job of taking some pictures. Some of them, we don't have those things in West Fork, so she's taken some pictures from Little Rock, and there's some from Farmington John, there, Prairie Grove. Anyway, look through that. If you guys have questions about it, we'll get those answered, and then when we have our public hearing to adopt a new zoning ordinance, we'll be better prepared to answer any questions that the public may have.
Which we'll have a meeting before we even propose it anyhow, yeah.
So in that same thread, I want to bring up a couple other things. So for the planning commission, at their last meeting, I had put together some numbers. We did a rezone, we did some variances.
Oh, yeah.
At, up there by the admin building for those townhouses. So in doing that, what did that do for the city? From a financial standpoint, that's not the only way I know to look at things, but I put some numbers to that because I was kind of curious. So I went to the county website and figured out how to calculate property taxes. That's a fun formula, Misty, you'll have to look that up sometime. But in the past, based on the value of that lot, we've been getting about $30 a year in property tax from that lot. That was the city's allotment. Once that project is complete, we're going to get about $700 a year in property tax. Still not a lot of money, but a lot more than what we were getting. In the first year of that, by adding eight sewer taps and eight water taps, that's about 12 grand to put that in. The water and sewer bills are going to, what did I say, is going to be roughly on an annual basis, we're going to get an extra $10,000 a year coming into the city in different departments, but just by changing the use of that land, by that land being developed, it's about $10,000 a year annually that'll continue on for the foreseeable future, just out of putting a use to that land. So now we have, and I'm not influencing any decisions, but we have somebody coming in looking at 39 lots. What does that do to the city from a financial standpoint? And by seeing what eight does, we can see what some bigger developments are capable of bringing into the city. Now, I have a question for you. When this group comes in to meet on their variances, am I, so I've read through this, trying to read up on variances, and I'm not going to be at the meeting, I'm going to be out of town. But our documents say, and this is a little bit confusing to me, our instructions that we give them, and this comes straight out of the code book, but it says that the board of adjustment will set a date for a public hearing. So my question is, is it automatically getting a question?
No, because the way a variance works is you can't grant one through use.
Correct.
Anybody can come to apply, but if they're applying for something that we can't grant, well, then we won't set the public hearing because we can't grant them the variance. So it's kind of, it's just procedural, really. They come in with the application, we look over, see it's something that, yes, we can consider for granting, and then it moves on. If it's not something that we can consider, then we can't move on.
But to me, that's almost a guarantee they're getting a public hearing.
Pretty much, yeah. If it's...
If it's within the purview of variances.
If it's something that's allowable, then pretty much, yeah.
Okay.
It's hard to ever see something that could happen, you know, that wouldn't leave us...
Yeah, basically, if they're trying to get a variance from residential to commercial, well, that doesn't warrant a public hearing.
Doesn't warrant continuous, yeah.
Right, yeah, okay. So on that, this is something new to West Fork that they're proposing. We have somebody coming in, they're talking about the property where the RV park was. They're wanting to put single-family residential homes on it, but it's not homes like we have in West Fork.
Exactly how many acres is that we're talking about?
Six.
Less than seven. More than six, less than seven, I don't...
Maybe six and a half, yeah, something like that.
Six point seven or something. So they're wanting to put 39 homes on that. In that, they're wanting to, they're wanting to do more of a row-style home, so it's a narrow house, it's, what'd they say, 1600 to 1800 square foot homes, two-story?
1700 to 1800.
1700 to 1800 square foot homes, two-story. They're wanting to move those homes closer to the street than what we currently allow. So currently, we say you have to have a 25-foot setback on the front yard?
Yes.
They're wanting to move them closer so that they can put the garage in the rear of it.
Like over there on the same?
Yes.
Yeah.
But they're also wanting to make the lot, instead of 70 feet wide, which we just moved down to 70 feet, and then we gave an allowance down to 60 for a portion in a subdivision, but they're wanting to squeeze the lots down to 50 feet wide. So we're talking the narrow rowhouse-type style homes. Is everybody with me there? So that's what's coming before the planning commission.
And side setbacks as well, number one.
Right, by squeezing the lots down, yeah, I think that's, yeah. So that's going to come to a public hearing. Those are all...
Likely, yeah.
Yeah, those are all things that would get you, I mean, the planning commission, again, grants that. So it's going to go to a public hearing. I feel confident some of the neighbors don't want 39 homes by either. But as a body, as a planning commission, as a city council, we need to decide, are we in favor of that type of stuff? That's the stuff that's new to us, that's why I'm bringing this up. Nobody's ever came in here and proposed doing rowhouses in the city of West Fork. But I do know that there's another spot where it's been considered in West Fork. So what I'm saying is, the planning commission needs to hear the council's opinions on this when we get to a public hearing. Let them know, let them know what you guys think. Is that something we want nothing to do with in West Fork? Is it something that we consider in areas?
Because as board of zoning adjustment, we rule on variances.
That's right, that's right. So that's not going to come to us unless it comes to the field.
Sure have a pretty view.
Not if it's the garage.
It'd be beautiful.
It's no view, everybody's looking at the garage door at the park.
Two-story.
So my point being, they're going to rule on that public hearing, or they're not going to rule on the public hearing, but they're going to rule on the variance.
So they're wanting it to be 55?
100 would be the lot size.
There's a bunch of them on Zion also.
There's also, that's exactly what they have been building in South Fayetteville.
Oh, yeah, they're...
Right, behind.
It's kind of a popular thing.
MLK.
And so, well...
They look great.
I'm not necessarily a fan of them.
They're all over the place.
Not necessarily a fan, not for me. However, what I would say is, I don't know of any of them that are setting vacant right now. So somebody likes it or not. I don't think they're going to set vacant in West Fork if we grant that, but the point being...
They're not cheap.
That's, yeah, 1800 square feet, they're going to be expensive, but the point is, that's what the planning commission is facing. Those are decisions that they're going to have to weigh. Give them some thought on, if they deny this and it comes to the council, what's, how's that going to go? What's the council's thought? Give that to them ahead of time. Give them, give them their thoughts on it, it's all they're getting at.
So when is the meeting on? Is that the 23rd?
Well, I mean, you'll be able to ask me questions of the applicants as you like. Nobody's ever been unforthcoming with, you know, answering, but it'll be this Thursday at 6:30 here is when they'll be presenting their application and where it's likely to go to public hearing, which doesn't seem like anything to...
So what's the special meeting on the 23rd about?
With Juliet Ritchie. And that will be for discussing further on what we were looking at, some more terrain-based, possibly, on that large swath in the northeast where we're looking at a bunch of yellow in the medium density.
She has no idea what you're talking about. Large swath, much yellow.
You gave them the map, right?
No, I just gave them the...
You gave them the map.
That's the aim of the jury.
So what they've been talking about is what areas of West Fork fit downtown? What areas of West Fork fit walkable neighborhood?
Something quarter-acre lots, under half-acre lots anyways, quarter or eight-acre or so, and then versus some areas where we would prefer it stay, you know, higher than that, half-acre, acre more.
So really, what it comes down to...
But all of this is Thursday's meeting?
No, well, we'll talk about it some, I'm sure, but...
I mean, not the Ritchie, the...
The variance for the RV, the one that would maybe possibly, that is this Thursday.
Yeah. So this Thursday, they'll be talking about that, and they'll be talking about, they'll be talking about...
Our public hearing also at 6:00.
They have a public hearing to discuss whether we turn the pump station into commercial.
So you mentioned that lots of, I've seen them too, I mean, they are all over. So I'm assuming that other cities also have the same variance guidelines in place, then they must have maybe waived them for those rowhouses?
So I think what...
So is there a criteria that they have to...
So most, we are a little behind the times on zoning. A lot of cities have already made some of the changes that we're making. So they, a lot of cities have set out certain areas where this design, if you want to build this in these blocks, have at it, we will stand out of your way.
Okay.
In West Fork, we don't have anything. It's single-family residential, but that's on a lot this size, so we don't have any of those more specific zoning areas in West Fork. And so in West Fork, in order to do something like that, it has to be done through variances.
The reason for it...
Or you make a text change. You change the text somewhat expedited, but you move with dispatch and you change the text, you create that zone. Right, and so we're not wanting, we are working through the zoning code, and that's some of the discussions that the planning commission is having, is do we, do we allow this type of stuff as a right in certain areas of the city? Do we say in Dina's neighborhood, if you're building in these parameters, that you can build narrow houses? That's what they're working on, is where do we put that kind of stuff? Are we even wanting that kind of stuff in West Fork?
Which we'll go into our deliberation, but also because variances to decide when the main is the hardship on the person developing the land, and that's if our zoning regulations require something to where, like the main example is a corner lot. Say if you've got side setbacks or whatever, at a certain point, you can't use a corner lot, so you might allow some variances to them. So really, you got to look at the hardship. So if we're going into this thinking that we're just going to allow it anyways, so that's, I don't know, it's going to be a tough one because we're going to have to decide that, what kind of hardship is done by the applicant as far as needing this, you know, why are our regulations as such that they can't develop that lot as they'd like to? So we'll see.
So it's, I mean, it is a issue to work through, and so much of it is, it's new to us. We don't necessarily have guidance, we can't look at something that's already happened in West Fork and say, yeah, we like it, we don't like it. These are things that are coming to us that if we just look at what is going on in that world, the sprawl is coming to an end. The neighborhood like Greystone, they're not putting in as many of them. They're a different style of house, they're trying to get more on the same land, or, you know, a lot of people are saying now with interest rates going up, more people are not qualifying for these more expensive homes. Interest rate's at 6%, whatever it's at, it's harder to qualify for that, which is going to make the multifamily even more popular. People can't buy a house, but they can rent multifamily-style dwelling. So because of those things, West Fork needs to get, I mean, the developers are down here looking, but they're not down here looking to build a 2,000-square-foot ranch-style home on an 8,000-square-foot lot in a, you know, in a subdivision. That's just not what they're here for. So, and I'm not saying that's good or it's bad, I'm simply saying those are the problems that we're facing. Those are, that's what's coming, that's what they're looking for. Do we want to say yes to some of it? Do we want to say yes to all of it? Do we want to say no to all of it? But that's what the planning commission...
Needs to decide, yeah.
They need to decide, but they need input. You know, Stephanie and Mrs. Connor are about the only two residents that they get to give input, and Ms. Connor and I, she got me in a headlock at the last meeting. But yes, give them their input, Jen.
Well, how many houses can you put on it now at what are...
I'm not sure. Two and a half, something.
Rowhouses, they make it like they're just...
Down to 7,000 square feet, let's see, what is it?
So we're currently...
Two houses on one.
Jennifer, how many, or how many feet are in an acre? 43,000 and some change?
Sure don't take you long to mow their lawns. They might want to up on Zion.
How can you demonstrate your virtue if you can't mow your lawn?
On Zion or an outdoor community.
60.
There's only 70 acres.
Right.
So it's .16 of an acre.
What criteria do people have in order to swallow?
About 40.
Should they can build 40 houses on it instead of 39?
So if you just look at just square footage, yeah, I think that's, I think that's right.
What does she think, sorry?
No, that doesn't make sense.
I think you make four or five per acre, maybe five per acre max, right?
Yeah. I think it's six max is what we currently add, isn't it?
Once we moved it down to seven, yeah. Well, that's with the 10, it's the overall factor, so I think it still works out at about five per acre, but with that 10% of lots that we allow at 6,000, I think it works out to an average overall of about six per.
You get your cliff. Yeah, so it's roughly six per acre if we're at about seven acres, that's 42.
There's seven there?
It's six point something.
Six point something.
Yeah. So around 40. Maybe, maybe 35.
35.
35 to 40 is what you could currently get on there. Now, that's, that's if everything was perfectly squared up and, you know, the streets were taken out, just, right, I mean, that would be a perfect scenario in order to get that made.
Right.
This isn't a perfect scenario that...
And that's not counting roads, that's not counting, yeah.
So here is, pass it that way and pass it back.
Is this what they were planning?
Yeah.
That's the proposal.
That's just a rough draft proposal. They don't want to do anything until they find out if a variance is...
So 50 feet frontage on each of those.
Do they have green spots? Yes. They usually do when they do those closer, they have more space. Yeah, they put a pond and park-type setting in it.
So just out of curiosity, I don't know if this is, I'm thinking too far ahead, but if they were to build them, is there any way that we could control them, like from Riverside? People would siege in front of the houses instead of a bunch of garages from Riverside? Like, is there any way to? There's always a way. Okay. I mean, because I'm not opposed to the idea, we need houses in our town, we need some. So I'm not that opposed to it, I'm just thinking Riverside Park is down there, that's a lot of the objections to the RV parks, what view are you getting from this scenic area? So that's just what I'm wondering.
I'd say, yeah.
It's also not residential, it's commercial on the front.
Yeah, but you could build single-family.
You can single-family and residential.
You can build multifamily.
Oh, this is it?
That's the, where we were getting at.
That's our rough proposal.
You don't, okay. I don't know if this is any of them, this is...
Do you know what, how this map reads?
Yeah, she'll show it to me, I'll tell you. So the, yes, that is 71.
That little side street, that would be like Church Street, that saying.
So then this would be the river. So then this would be the river.
So, yeah, we'll have some fun.
What's your question, Stephanie?
So in the applications for variance, it does say in here that the boarding, board of zoning adjustment may impose conditions in granting the variance. To ensure compliance and to protect adjacent properties. And so my question was, like, are there things that you could do like to make sure that the aesthetics? And there's like barriers around the property, like the tree lines stay up? Can you require that there's a POA to ensure that the neighborhood stays?
I don't know that we can require a POA.
Can they put those kinds of conditions?
Do you have a POA in your neighborhood?
I don't, but I'm sure that those, those types of neighborhoods in Fayetteville.
We have, if, if there's, well, actually, since they have the pond though, since they're putting in maybe a holding pond. We have in our code that if you put in water mitigation, then there has to be an overseeing body.
Yeah.
So you either have to form a POA or something, or give that land to the city and then they oversee, but yeah.
If the city wants it.
If the city wants it.
City might not wanna.
Right, keep up just.
So again, I'm gonna go back to what I told you guys at the last meeting. I'm not gonna sit here and lie to you about. So our bodies are really worried about control and they want to control different things. I'm gonna be honest with you. There are some things we can say that we're putting this in place. Whether that is controlled or enforced is a totally different story because in five years, you're the only person that remembers that, right? That is, that's not getting codified as part of something that the police department, you know, that's, those aren't criminal charges. Those are, what do you call those?
There is nobody here to enforce a POA.
Cities don't, cities don't enforce POAs anyway.
No, that's what I'm saying.
We, we currently have a subdivision that has a water feature. They have a covenants that says you can do X, Y, and Z in their neighborhood, but they have never formed a POA. And since they don't have the, the body to enforce it, the city has no, that's all civil is, is the term. That doesn't come through the police department, that is, you sue that person. So I just, I want to be honest with you, I'm not opposed to putting in controls and restrictions, but I want to be honest with you. We sometimes we get a little bit, we get control happy and we want to control this and control that when in reality. Maybe that makes you guys feel better, but it's, it's somewhat dishonest and I, I'm, I'm trying not to go there.
Unachievable.
Yeah, it's unachievable. And, and we think we can control some of those things that really we're not going to. And I'm not saying that we can't control some things, don't take that wrong, any of you, but. When we were talking about the RV part, we were, we were getting in their business. You know, we were saying you can do this and you can't sell this after that. That's, if we're gonna do that, we need to do that by ordinance, not by, by setting restrictions through the planning commission or, or, or city council. There needs to be ordinances, not, not just rules that we're making up for them.
They completely stand alone, right?
Yes, conditions.
Cause conditional, conditional uses are non precedent, it's just, that's a one off.
Right, right.
That is its only iteration of that.
And so what, I'm not against those things, I, I just, in reality, there's a lot of those conditions we put on them that are out of our control. We may think it's a good idea, but it's not the city's place to, to control some of those things.
So the row houses in Fayetteville that look beautiful are completely up to the property owners? And the row houses that look not so beautiful are also completely up, is that how others?
There's a variation.
I don't, I had no idea, to be honest with you. But I, I would say that most of our houses in West Fork are just up to the landowner and. And I, I would say that. At that price tag, you're probably gonna have owners rather than renters in that.
What is the price tag?
It's, it's eighteen hundred square feet, so.
Two hundred dollars a square foot minimum for new construction.
So what's that come to?
Three sixty what?
Three sixty, Dawn?
Yeah.
Be pretty close to that. So I mean, you're talking about. Some expensive homes, if, if that's what they build. Now, that's not to say, and I want everybody to be clear on this, they, they can come in and say, hey, we want to build eighteen hundred square foot homes. And when they get down to it, as long as they build over twelve hundred square feet, they've met the requirements. So I don't want to mislead anybody there either. Do what?
It's, it would be a subdivision.
Yeah, it'd be a subdivision, yeah, it's curb and gutter, the whole bit.
It is hard, yeah.
Yeah, it's over four lot splits, so it has to go to subdivision rules, but. I, I made this comment before, they come to us sometimes and this is the plan, but by the time they get their money and they start breaking ground, that plan may have changed. And I don't think it's because they necessarily came in to deceive us, but conditions change. So the plan is eighteen hundred square foot homes, but it would be a minimum of twelve hundred square foot as it currently stands.
But it would have to stay single family?
Yes. Without a rezone, it would have to stay single family. So they do have a retention pond drawn on here, but most of that runoff is gonna be caught in the curb and gutter system of the streets. So it'll be. No, 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 that would go in that ditch that runs in front of.
And then go into the river?
Yeah. So anyway, I, I bring that up, I didn't want to get off on too long of a tangent, but I do want everybody to understand. What's coming before us, that it's something that we're not used to dealing with. And so the more input we can get on that, the better. Any other questions for Walter?
Holy cow, Walter.
I know, I took forever. I know.
All right, moving on, Tracy.
So I guess I'll start with dispersments. Our dispersments this month, we were down about four hundred from last month, which is not much. And then we were up about three thousand from the same month last year. And I was noticing that we had a hundred more citations that we dealt with this year than the same month last year. And then we did last month, so, and we're up about five hundred tickets over last year right now. Okay, so there's that. I did want to let you know that I went to the first class at my court manager program, that was in Little Rock last week. Was it last week? No, it was the week before last.
Week before.
Yeah, well, I was in Minneapolis last week, so my days are all kind of running together. Anyway, but I was down there for three days, I think I've, they told us some, some really good things to look for, different reports and things. So I'm hoping that with the knowledge that we're getting, that we'll be able to make ourselves more efficient. And maybe do some cleanup with some old stuff that's just hanging out there in our system, that maybe throwing numbers and stuff off. For dollar amounts and stuff on some of our other reports. I'm signed up to go to another class in July, that, and the state is coming up with a new. Software program for court systems, it's, they're working on it right now, so they want us to go down there at the end of July and test it out and give our input. You know, to, so they can figure out what works for everybody. The new software is supposed to be free, is what I've been told. But I think the thing that will have the cost associated with it is the conversion process, but there won't be a monthly fee after that. There's not supposed to be like we currently pay. So I'm, I'm anxious to get my hands on it and see what they've come up with, so. Any questions?
Any questions for Tracy? So if you notice on her report, the failure to appear and failure to pay is skyrocketing.
Imagine that.
So, so Tracy is working on a, a new system to text people about their dates and their, their balances and whatnot. So hopefully that may have an impact on some of that, we don't know. But right now, Tracy's basically trying to cut some costs with mailing and looking at a, at a text feature to, to see if we can reach people better that way, but.
I'm ready to move forward, I'm just waiting on approval to spend a little bit of money. It's only like fifty dollars a month, I think, fifty, sixty dollars a month.
But that is a real issue.
Do they typically give their correct information, like their correct number?
They do give at the time, yes, but a lot of these people have problems, you know, with their bills and things. And so they're getting a new number all of the time, they're getting a new email all the time, they're getting a new, a new address, they move all the time. So, I mean, we do our best, but if we can do the, a lot of times, we can get a number for their mom. We can get a, a number for their aunt or something and say, hey, we're just trying to get in touch with this person, cause we have access, you know, on the, on the Washington County website. And we, we are able to look up new addresses, new phone numbers, relationships, different things like that, and we try to reach out to those people. We, we're doing everything that we possibly can, I, I know I've been told by other courts that we kind of go above and beyond a little bit compared. But we try to reach out to everybody and make sure that we don't have to issue that warrant because they're already, you know, they've already been kicked. And I don't want to kick them again while they're down if I don't have to. So we try to give them every opportunity to start making payments of some sort and, you know, we try to reach out to them and we. Some people, you know, they miss the first date, you get a warrant, you're done. And we don't do that, the judge doesn't want us to do that, we always send them a letter and say, hey, you missed your court date, the warrant's gonna be issued in ten days if we don't hear from you. And, but that, on that first one, and we would love it, but we don't want to put anything else on the police department, they have a lot of things going. We would love it if they could get a cell phone number or any kind of phone number at the time of the stop. You know, so when the judge isn't gonna be there or there's inclement weather or something like that, we're not gonna have court, we'd love to be able to reach out to them and tell them that. But, but right now that we don't do that part, so.
Have you discussed that with your police department to give a phone number?
I have not yet. It was one of those things that we just talked about like two weeks ago, so we haven't really.
Cause that's what one of our requirements is at Farmington, when you write a citation, get a phone number.
Yeah, we love it when people call us, cause I mean, we love so much that we can take care, oh, it's gonna tell us too. The courtroom was so full the other day, last Thursday, Jessica has been here, she started last April. And it's the fullest she has ever seen the courtroom, she's like, oh my gosh, I can't believe there were that many people. Like everybody showed up for trials, well, not everybody, cause we did have some failure to appear, but I mean, there was a ton of people for the trials and for their arraignments, so.
That used to be every Tuesday.
Yeah. And somebody did, this is totally not my department, but somebody stopped me in the parking lot to see if the planning commission meeting was going on tonight. And I did encourage them to reach out to the administration building and get on a mailing list or whatever. So they would know when it was and, and I encouraged him to come, I encouraged him to come in now, but he said he would try to come back Thursday.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, Blair.
All right, so our checkout statistics for last month in May are at two thousand four hundred and thirty-three, which is almost exactly on par with May of last year. But we did have three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifteen requests for books from other libraries in our system. Which is up from this time last year, which is great, cause that means that people are using our online catalog to order books. Which can be scary for a lot of people using that for the first time, so I'm glad to see more people are using it. And then if you'll notice, we issued forty-three new library cards last month, which is the highest number we've had all year. So it looks like everyone's ready to start their summer reading. And we have our Oceans of Possibilities Summer Reading Program going on right now. We had Arkansas Game and Fish come last week, they did a fishing program with the kids. This week on Thursday, we're gonna have Laurel Lamb from the UA Museum back again. She's gonna be showcasing shark related museum pieces like fossils and artifacts. And then next week will be Raptor Birds with the Wildlife Rehabilitation Center in Bradet. So I think they're bringing like an owl and a falcon, so that's exciting. And then on the thirtieth, we will have Water Robotics Making with Timberly of the Amasium. And I can keep going, but I'll stop.
Any questions for Blair?
I have a comment, just to say that we absolutely love the programs that they have done for the past couple of years, they, they're doing a great job.
So Blair, I need to, and Tracy, I need to reschedule our meeting on Friday. Can we move that to Monday?
We can, can you guys come to the library?
No.
About.
All week?
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I'll be back to the courtroom, definitely.
So let's postpone through this week. And we'll try to figure out when we can do it. So Tracy has volunteered to be on the next Ask the Mayor to highlight her department, so we're excited to have that, so any questions? Now we gotta wait. We're, we were all good to go and then I had something come up and I'm gonna be out of town. So, all right. Thank you, Blair, Chief Nelson.
See here, we had four hundred and eight calls for service, a hundred and ten citations with fifty-nine warrants. Memorial Day was a little bit quieter than it normally was, which is a good thing. We had a lot of people, but we didn't have the call load and it wasn't, the parking wasn't like times in the past, it wasn't hectic and all over the place. We made five misdemeanor arrests. And that's about what I have, I think everything's been going pretty much according to plan. Did anybody see our Facebook? Nobody notices the positive stuff. About the bicycle.
I thought that was awesome.
We had a young man that was in ninth grade last year that saved all year long, cut grass, did anything he can do, he's into mountain biking. His parents brought home the bike, it was stolen within thirty minutes from his parents' car. We think we tracked down who it was, he's not talking, he's locked up in jail, imagine that. Somebody got wind of that and donated us a six hundred dollar bike, which was an absolute step up from what he had bought. So we were happy to give that to him, that was a major deal and that, that was a lot of fun. So, any questions for me?
You say, did you see our Facebook, you need to be more specific on.
Police Facebook.
That covers, I mean, I knew it was a policeman.
Just, just police Facebook, so.
Thank you, Chief.
A guy sitting in jail to get his phone number? You know who he is, I probably know who he is.
Maybe you could get his number for us. Okay, so Isaac is not here. He wanted to know if you were keeping track of his absences.
Absolutely.
If I was?
Yeah. He said, Dawn's gonna kill me, this is the third time I've missed.
Him and Chad's kinda competing.
They are, they are. So, he did send me an email though that he wanted me just to kind of update and then I know Nick has some updates for us as well on sewer. So Isaac said that they had started the flow monitoring, which we've made a budget adjustment to pay Nick's group to do some flow monitoring. They, in that, they identified nineteen manholes with leaks, they fixed six of those so far, but I would direct y'all's attention back to about. Seven years ago when we paid a million dollars to get all the manholes repaired and replaced. So they found nineteen with, that are leaking, they fixed six of those so far. They found a, a sewer tap that was, I guess, just open, getting water in it. They've got that taken care of. They've replaced two taps on Phillips and the, the Church's Service over here on Phillips by the curve. Did a point repair over there, they've also identified four other taps that need replacement on Craig Street. Replaced a tap on Maple, identified a repair on McKnight. So something Isaac did that kind of fell through the cracks with him coming on in the middle of this sewer project. And yes, it has been going on since twenty fifteen. But the city had hired a firm to do a study on where some of this iodine was coming from. They produced a document called an SSES, Nick can tell us what that is. But it identified some things that needed to be fixed. Isaac came in after this. Isaac came in after this had already been done. Well, apparently this SSES document had kinda fell through the cracks. Isaac didn't even know what it was. He stumbled upon this and he has went back through it. And there were several things that were identified back in 2015 that needed attention. So he and Nick are working on that now, but, uh, out of that, uh, they've, they went around... So each house has a cleanout, uh, uh, what do you call that? A cleanout, uh, cap on it, right? Where if your sewer stops up, uh, the plumber can come and, and clean it out. Well, there were ten of those that needed to be replaced that were identified in that SSES report. They went and they've replaced those, so that, whether it was a broken cap or the cap was just completely missing and just catching all the rainwater. Uh, they've taken care of that. Uh, there's some, uh, some service lines that, uh, were identified needing replacements. So they've got, uh, they're scheduled to run their TV, their camera in those and identify what needs to be done to get more specific on what needs to be done there. And then, uh, Nick and Isaac have also, one of the things that they've found a lot of, uh, while they've been going back through this and looking at manholes is, uh, a lot of the taps that we put in. Uh, so a tap, uh, and Nick, if I get out of bounds here, straighten me out, but... So if, if somebody builds a new house, that requires a newer sewer tap. We have to go tap that main line to get their sewer to run into it. And what Isaac is telling me is that, uh, a large majority of the taps that have been put in, prior to him coming, um, are leaking. So he sent me a picture of one of the taps and there was a gap about that big where the pipe... Basically, we're using wrong-sized pipe and just, uh, stuffing stuff together. As the ground moved, it, the, the opening enlarged. And so they're finding a lot of that, which is where a lot of this INI is coming from. So, once he found that report and he started going back through that, they're finding some, some low-hanging fruit to get some more of that INI reduced. But, uh, that's obviously, that's still our battle in, in the sewer department is, is locating those and then getting repairs scheduled. But, um, that's where they're finding a lot of it. Nick, I'll let you take off from there.
Okay.
Let's see here. Yeah, I've had enough of the apologies for not getting it last week. One else, uh, out of town, but, um, as far as our big project, um, you know, just an update on, uh, on that. We, um, we did go out on site with, uh, with our contractor and their coatings subcontractor, um, on May tenth and took a look at the man, several manholes and, um, showed them what we were measuring in terms of thickness with our stuff and, and kinda agreed that, you know, from what we're seeing, we don't think it's up to par. So we, we put them to task to come up with a plan of what they're gonna do. Um, cause we've, over the past year, been pretty proactive and trying to help them find solutions and, and, um, we basically put them on notice, uh, week before last, right before I went out of town. Let them know that basically they will come up with a plan and I gave them a deadline. They have met the deadline for a submittal. It still needs some work, but we, uh, basically let them know that they need to take care of the problem or else we will take further action. Uh, gave them several options of, we take their remaining money that we invested in coatings and hire someone else to do it or pay them partially based on what we think is, you know, fair or hire someone else to do the tests and then go from there. So I think we got their attention, um, so they're working up a, a submittal. Um, they're, they're proposing to come out and do some sort of test and then repair in place if they find it's, the coatings aren't up to par. Uh, they just don't have a lot of details yet, so, um, I've asked for that because I want, I want us to approve it. I want Isaac to approve it and I need City of Fayetteville to approve it. I need all, all three of us to agree before they start work. So I'm expecting something hopefully this week or next week on a, the final plan, so we can move forward with that. Cause, um, or even, it's, we're about a year in since we identified this issue and that was kinda the reality when I talked to, um, Alan Johnson from the funding agency. He was, I think his patience is worn thin too. He said, we're gonna be done with the pond closure before we're done closing out the original contract. So, uh, that's where we are there. Of, on the pond closure, you know, Denali's out there working. They've, they spread lime in the ponds. They started with the South Pond. Not sure if that... I went out there when they're spreading some of the lime. Um, it's a little dusty.
Did you notice anything of it?
I thought it was a fire.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, it does, it, it looks kinda smoky. Uh, it, they seem like the day I went out there, they, they did a pretty good job keeping it down and just working it in one spot so it wouldn't, uh, go around, spread around everywhere. But they had, the, the smaller pond, they, they, they have lined and turned it over and they're trying to get it dried out. And I even, I stopped by this evening on the way down. And the north pond, the bigger one, they've de-watered it as well. Perfect time, everything's dry. They've lined that and I think they're gonna mix it all together and, and keep hauling. Um, they do have about three weeks left, so they've got a lot of work to do. So they've got dry weather and I expect to see them getting it done. Let's see, we'll keep moving down here. It's gonna jump down to the flow monitoring and talk a little more about that. Um, we did, you know, as, as Mayor mentioned, we, we put in four flow monitors. We put them back in, in April on one location, got, got some great data there. Pulled them out, put them in another location in, uh, mid-May. Got some more data and, uh, agreed with all this dry weather coming. We just said no more. There's no, no point in leaving something in the ground if it's according to dry, dry weather flow. So, um, the data from that did help us identify that when it does rain, we're seeing a very quick increase in flow. Rain stops, it comes down quick. So that was helping Isaac identify that, you know, it's, it's, we're getting more inflow than infiltration where it's coming in direct sources. Cause when Isaac had been carrying lines in dry weather, you don't see those kinda things happening. Uh, you'll see infiltration if you see water springing in the bottom, on the bottom of the manholes. But, uh, it was definitely evident from this data we collected that that's, that's a big part of the problem. You know, unfortunately, the, the taps and service lines and, not the mains necessarily, but where they're connecting in, that's, that's where the problems are. So I was talking to Christie, um, right before the meeting. I have reached out to, uh, Natural Resources Commission about funding, kinda what do we do? Um, you know, how do we, you know, there's obviously a lot of needs still out there. Um, you know, sewer bills from Fayetteville are high, especially when it rains. The more it rains, the higher the bills are. So, um, I've talked to Isaac. We are looking towards submitting an application next month to the Water and Wastewater Advisory Committee that was the guidance I received to go for this ARPA money. They still haven't released it yet or have a, a full amount that they're, that the, they're gonna distribute for water and sewer work. But, uh, they're starting to get applications and said we need to get to the front of the line and, and do what we can. We, we also even mentioned or talked about, um, need to go down to a commission meeting. Mayor, if possible, to discuss the situation too. Um, next commission meeting is August eleventh. And they said that you can participate, uh, via Zoom if needed to. So, wanna let y'all know that. So we're, we're trying to see what options are out there for, for money. Obviously, grant money, the free money is, is what, what is needed. You know, y'all are already paying plenty of debt service on the repairs you've done connecting to Fayetteville. So, um, we're gonna see what we can do to, to help out here. Y'all have any questions?
No? Okay. So thank you Nick.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll stay on water and sewer for just a minute. So I sent everyone, uh, forwarded everyone an email that I received from the City of Fayetteville saying that they wanted to raise water and sewer rates. And I also forwarded you my response to them. They were supposed to have, initially that, that email said they were having a meeting tonight, uh, for a public hearing to discuss those raised rate increases. City put, or Christie put that on the city's Facebook page, uh, trying to alert the citizens that, hey, Fayetteville's trying to come in and raise both water and sewer rates. Um, and the sewer rate increase is, is thirty-seven and a half percent, I think is what it was. Uh, we're talking a serious chunk of money. That takes our, uh, base sewer bill from, what, fifty to seventy-five? Or what did we say the other day? I don't, um... Yeah. So, we can't do that. I don't know what's gonna come out of it. I do know that, uh, we put that on, on Facebook. We didn't have a lot of time to get it out, but we put it on Facebook. And I went to the meeting tonight and I know that our citizens get pretty upset with me when I, when, you know, overrate increases, but I didn't see any of them at the meeting, uh, which was a little bit disconcerting to me. Uh, so I hope that at the next meeting, we'll have some citizen input at that Fayetteville public hearing. Um, it will take some time out of their day, but, um, that's a chunk of money, uh, that we're talking about. Now, uh, I've talked to Nick, or sorry, I've talked to Tom, uh, about that. He's looking at our contract with Fayetteville. So we're, as I pointed out in that, in that email, we're less than two years into a ten-year contract that had prescribed three percent annual raises in it. I don't know if there's wording in there to get them around that or not. That's, that's what we have Tom for, is to protect us on that. But, um, the meeting was not tonight. They're talking about it tonight, but they're not taking public input tonight. Uh, that is next Tuesday at five-thirty. Uh, they expect the public hearing to start at six o'clock. It's kinda their, their guideline. I mean, they're, they're gonna have the same thing we do, some business reports and whatnot and then go into that public hearing. So I would encourage anyone and everyone that can, uh, show up at that meeting. I don't know what we're gonna get out of it, but I certainly hope that it's not a thirty-seven percent increase in our sewer bills. But that is, that is what the City of Fayetteville is proposing. Uh, along with a ten percent increase in the water rates.
Jeez.
So, uh, it's not just the sewer, the folks that are on sewer that are gonna feel this. It's gonna be everybody in the City of West Fork gonna feel it if, if this goes through. We're in the same situation as the City of Elkins. So Elkins has a water and sewer department. They are a wholesale customer, just like we are. They're, they signed a new contract with the City of Fayetteville less than eight months ago, uh, a ten-year contract. So, uh, City of Elkins is fighting it too. Uh, the mayor and I have been talking about it. Um, they use the same attorney, so I feel like we're well-prepared, uh, for that. We should have a coordinated, uh, fight if it's something that the attorneys, uh, can, can weigh in on. But if you're a resident and you're buying water or you're buying sewer especially, highly encourage you to be at that meeting next Tuesday. And so Christie, if you would, update that. Uh, Blair, if you would, get it on, on your Facebook page as well. So that stuff kinda, it came out pretty quick and kinda out of nowhere. We didn't even know, uh, anything about it till they, they sent out their proposed rate increases. So, anyway, I wanted to point that out. That meeting is available on Zoom as well. So if you can't make it in person, they...
You have to pre-register.
Yes, you will have to pre-register for it.
Where was that meeting being held?
Fayetteville City Hall. So yeah, thirty-eight point seven percent is what they're wanting to increase the sewer. And ten point one percent is what they're wanting to increase the water.
Which, did I read that document right? That, that is all outside of the City of Fayetteville? That they are not raising rates inside the City of Fayetteville?
No, uh, they're raising both. Uh, it's inside and outside. Now, as a wholesale customer, we're the ones seeing, uh, they're not raising their rates internally that high. It's just for the wholesale clients that they're raising them that much on the sewer. Yeah. But yes, it is all City of Fayetteville residents will be getting a rate hike, which, which makes sense. Uh, so their, their justification for this is because they have a budget shortfall in operations and management. Okay? That's Fayetteville operations and management. We're, we're a pass-through customer. Uh, they're not doing anything for us but opening the tap to let water come down here or opening the tap to let sewer go up there. They're not doing operations and maintenance as far as the City of West Fork is concerned. So, um, as you noticed in that email I sent, I asked for their, uh, water loss, uh, reports and their INI reports.
Did you?
I have not received those yet. I did receive an email that they were gonna try to get those to me.
Yeah, they're working on them. I talked to Corey Granderson, said, and said he was, he was pulling that information for y'all.
So I believe that, uh, they have billions of gallons of water loss up there and that is with a B. Nick, am I accurate in that?
I'm not sure. I haven't, I haven't gotten into their...
If you were guessing?
Their, their, their percent is pretty high from, I know it's, it's...
And they're looking for us to make it up?
So my point is, most likely if they clean up their water loss, their budget shortfalls will take care of themselves. But we'll see when we get those reports for sure. But, so that's where we're at on that.
So like, what percentage are you thinking that theirs is?
Around fifty, forty-five to fifty.
For water loss, yeah.
They sell, they sell about thirty-something billion gallons of water a year. So half of that, talking fifteen billion gallons.
You got a lot of trucks running around, they not fixing any of that?
Dean wants fifteen billion times two cents per thousand.
But, so if citizens go to that meeting, will they be able to talk?
I, I don't know.
Or they just say to listen?
It's a public hearing. So as a water and sewer customer of them...
But are they gonna allow citizens from West Fork to speak?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
Pretty good odds.
There is a City of Fayetteville councilman that owns property in West Fork that's paying on that increase too. So that might help.
But, but that would be another good, a good point is to reach out to those council members, right? That's, that's what the public does for us or with us. Uh, reach out to those council members, express our concerns prior to the meeting. Uh, the more prepared they are, you know, the more likely they are to listen, um, to our complaints or, uh, concerns about that. Anything else on that? Okay. Thank you Nick.
Could have all the council members email, all their council members.
That would be a fantastic idea.
Include the mayor and the chief.
And I'm sure we can find those emails on their...
Yes, they're on their website.
On their website. I grabbed their agenda tonight. It has all their council members' names on it, but it doesn't have their contact information unfortunately, so. Uh, Parks Director Chad Harrison is absent tonight. Uh, they're doing the annual ball tournaments. That's where he and Isaac both are. Uh, that's where Chief Myers is at a ball tournament. So, uh, but that's good. A lot of stuff going on in West Fork with that. Chad did, they did have a parks meeting, uh, this past month, so that report's in, in your report. Is there any questions concerning parks?
So everything's good to go for the celebration at Little Buck?
Yes. And then lastly, we have Christie with the treasurer's report.
So, for the city's finances, we are a hundred sixty-five thousand, um, increased our bank balances so far this year. Um, and our departments are showing almost four hundred thousand under budget. And all of the budget, all of the departments are showing under budget except, uh, one that's seventy-five dollars over budget. So, um, the sales tax is holding pretty steady. Um, I did print a new chart, um, just because I had extra time today. Um, so I did the sales tax, city sales tax and county sales tax for the last five years from January to May just so we could put this year with it to just kinda give us a visual of the steady increase that our sales taxes had. I really wasn't sure that we were that much ahead this year than we were last year, but we are still. It looks like we're steadily increasing. The county's decreasing a tiny bit, but, um...
So Christie, I would say, I got this, I got here, you handed this out and I thought, great minds must think alike. So I have a little extra time on my hands too. So from Christie's treasurer report, end of month summary, where she keeps us updated each month on sales tax. Um, I got to looking at that and we're, uh, January through May, uh, we were at four twenty-two, uh, four hundred twenty-two thousand dollars in sales tax collection, just city sales tax. And I was curious, what does that, what does that represent? What kind of an increase, uh, have we seen in sales inside the city limits? Misty, you care to take a guess? So, previous year, January through May, there are... So previous year, January through May, there had been thirteen million dollars worth of sales, taxable sales in the city of West Fork. That's how you get to three hundred ninety-three thousand in sales tax. So the difference represents an extra one million dollars in sales year-to-date. So year-to-date, sales generated within the city of West Fork or deliveries made within the city of West Fork, however you want to break that down or look at it, it's been over fourteen million dollars of products sold here. Would anybody on this council have ever guessed that? We're a little city, right?
I'm working at the post office. I know.
It is amazing.
About fourteen million dollars, a lot of money. Sorry. I kind of chuckled when I saw you done a little extra work on sales tax, and I had too.
You had extra time, too.
Yeah. So then, then we'll throw the water department, which is not near as far as the city. On their report, Jeff actually called me today and, and got me to thinking more. So next month, I'm going to add some information to the water report that I hope will be helpful and kind of tie the two reports together that we get. But if you look at the bank balances for the water department, it shows that we've actually decreased our bank balances by twenty-six thousand. Although that's accurate as far as actual money, it's not accurate because the city's having to fund that department. So it's accurate that our bank accounts don't have less money, but the city is giving the water department more money to function. So we're having to provide money to keep those bank balances up. Hopefully that makes sense. The sewer, our, our income versus our Fayetteville, our cost to treat plus bonds from January through May, we've actually lost eighty-nine thousand dollars. For June, we lost sixty-seven. Like, we don't have an exact income now, but using approximately fifty-four thousand dollar worth of income, which is about where it's been, our payment to Fayetteville for June, which you guys don't see on your report yet, was a hundred and one thousand. And then we had twenty thousand dollars worth of bonds.
It's all lost, but it was still way up there.
So in one month, we lost almost, almost as much as we had lost in five months because of the rainy month. We do, a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel. We do, we've looked at our numbers that we've sent Fayetteville this year. We do expect that number to come back down, our treatment costs to come back down into the fifties, fifty thousands again this month. So our, what we've sent Fayetteville this, this month compared to the one that was sent in May has come back down. And we did meter readings this month, this, this last week, and our water loss has come down to twenty-seven percent. So Isaac and his guys are killing themselves out there looking for stuff. They're hitting the streets at three o'clock in the morning when we have heavy rains and looking at manholes and. He fixes one and then feels like one blows out right next to it. And so he's, he feels like he's beating his head against the wall. But I, I mean, we are seeing some improvements, and we can all pray for a drought for the next few years and maybe we'll make it. But I do, Nick and I were talking about it. Our balance in our savings account at the water department is now two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And when we're looking at being a hundred thousand dollars in the hole already this year, that kind of tells you that it's, it's kind of a dire situation as far as getting some help from an NRC. So we'll keep pushing them and seeing what we can get from them. And, and Isaac obviously is going to keep looking for holes, and we're going to keep doing what we can to try to get it out.
Two things. How much did you say was in that bank account?
In our savings account for the water department, it's two hundred and sixty thousand.
Two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I just wanted to point out that we're being as transparent as we can be. And that seems like a lot of money. But when you're talking about water and sewer, there's not a project in there that's less than ten thousand dollars. I mean, that, that goes quick. And that's, so we, we would hope that we had that bank account if, if we needed to add a storage tower for water or. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that there's not money for.
One bad disaster, and then be gone.
That's right. So I just tried to point that out, that one, that's, that's pretty transparent. It's as transparent as we can get. This is how much money we have in that account. But that is not a lot when you're talking about things that, that are that expensive. I want to point out one other thing. So Christie said she wasn't sure how much money was coming in yet. She's talking about June. The numbers aren't final. So just so nobody runs out of here and misquotes that we don't know how much money is coming in. I just want to point that out. She's talking about June, and the month is not over yet.
We are projecting that we will get about fifty-four thousand worth of sewer income for June.
Now, I would say, so I was thinking about this before the meeting. Typically, this time of year, we see the sewer sales go up a little bit more. So because of watering and different things, so we're using more water, but that's not necessarily going into the sewer. It's not enough to, to dig us out of this. But I, I do expect the sewer sales to go up closer to sixty thousand in a month. But that's of small.
Well, this rain helps a lot.
Yeah.
And we're still, we have to keep in mind that Fayette, we're a month behind with Fayetteville.
Yes.
So they just now, they, they read mid-month like we do. So the next bill that we receive will actually still have a little bit of that rainy season in it that we had there at the end. So hopefully these strong weeks will help.
Paying a hundred thousand and collecting fifty is going in the wrong direction, right? And couple that with the fact that they're, they're wanting to increase that rate.
Right.
Thirty percent.
And that isn't hammer our bonds, that's just the cost to Fayetteville. That's all the good news I have.
Debbie Downer. So while Christie's here, I also wanted to point out that she has been accepted to participate in the Arkansas Certified Public Managers Program. So that's a very intense, very intense program. It's in, so intense, in fact, that they had to get my okay before they would even allow her to apply to it because it's going to take up some time. She's going to have to put some work into it to get it done. But this is going to be good for Christie, but it's going to be great for the city. So it's, it's definitely increasing Christie's value and her poachability. But it's, it's a good thing for the city of West Fork. This is, she, she fills a human resource role. She's, she's a finance director, but she wears several hats, and she does our human resources, and this is really going to help with that. So I'm excited that she got accepted because it's not, it's, it's not a pay-to-play. It's you get accepted and then you get to pay, right? So it's fairly prestigious, and I'm excited for her.
Congratulations, Christie.
Good you could do more work.
So. Fantastic. Thank you, Christie.
Another star in her crown.
That's exactly right. So I will point out, Christie said we got one, one department that's over budget. That department is almost always over budget. So the, the whole idea of admin of justice is it takes in and it pays out. So it's, if it's above, if it's not under budget or below budget, under budget, it's just barely. So it's always within like a hundred dollars one way or the other. And it, we have no control over, very little control over that. That's the courts. So, all right. John, did you think it was going to take us that long to get through reports tonight?
No.
I did about the third one in.
So next item of new business is to review the update of planning, commission, appointees, and terms. Do we have any questions with that? We talked about it last month, that we were just trying to get everything back on schedule and updated. Any questions, concerns with that? So we were kind of hoping just to get council approval on what we, what we're doing there with the terms. Motion is second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
That motion. All those opposed, no. That motion carries. Item two is ARPA-related, to approve the completed project expenses. And Christie gave us an updated report on that. There's one in our packet, but she said it changed to nine hundred dollars from the time she printed it. She also has the list of everything that we've purchased with those funds. Are there any questions regarding that? So these are, these are projects that we approved, just use our ARPA funds on. For the most part, they've came in, or under budget. One of them, you can see, two of them came in over budget. But those, those are what we have completed. Some of this, you can see, they're, they're looking to reallocate. There's not enough funds left in it to, to complete some of the others. We still have some of that money set aside for EMS, central EMS. If, if we can ever get all of the mayors to come to a consensus about spending some extra money at EMS so that they can get some new equipment out of that ARPA fund. We're currently just sitting on that waiting. It is not the city of West Fork holding that up. So can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the spending of our ARPA funds on sewer projects, water projects. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is to approve project two zero two-two dash zero zero eight sewer flow monitoring, use of the ARPA funds. Do we have any questions on that? Do we have a motion on that? Jimmy made a motion. Jan second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Other business. So I have one point on here. The response to that letter we received from Legislative Audit is in here. Any questions on that?
I didn't hear a question, sorry.
Why are we so far behind?
Some personal health issues with a family member.
He's about to get got up.
Well, so technically twenty, twenty, I've got to make sure my dates are right here in my mind. Twenty twenty is due the end of this month. So he is, he is working on twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, hoping it should be done this week, I think was the date he gave us.
The fifteen.
And then he'll start twenty twenty. I will tell you that that doesn't concern me a lot because typically audits are behind by a year, even with Legislative Audit. Would I, if we get twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen done, I feel confident in saying that's caught up, even though it's not technically caught up. He has all the information. I think he's at the process of just writing the report.
And so what's aggravating about that, Jeff, is it's going to be the same report that we get every year? That we have too few people to ensure that.
Same, same deficiency.
Yep, yep. Too few people wear too many hats.
I've got another question. How come we don't go with the free, the municipally, you know, does a free one? How come we don't do that?
Very good question. Christie, I'll let you answer it, and then I'll, I'll add to it.
Well, I'll tell you the, the pros that I see of using a, an individual auditor is we have a more thorough audit. Legislative audit comes in, and they, they basically look for theft, and that's all they're looking for. They're looking for people that are still in the.
And they find it too. Because they found it in the apartment.
And that's not a bad thing, but that's not thorough. Jim is doing a much more thorough audit and actually making sure that all of our financial reports, all of our depreciation is being figured. So he's doing a much more thorough audit. It also is a situation where if and when questions come about, can we do this? Can we not do this? I cannot get that guidance from Legislative Audit. But I have a direct line to Jim, send an email, get an answer. Typically, we have an answer. I don't rely on that nearly as much as I did at first, but those things still do come up. So I personally have a, a lot of. It makes me feel more comfortable with answering questions, knowing that I have him to back up those answers if we need that. There are probably other ways that I can get that if we didn't use him. But it's, it's been very nice to have that as a professional opinion backup over my, the knowledge that I have. On top of that, even if the city went to Legislative Audit, the water is required to use a private auditor. The Legislative Audit would not do the water. So we don't have an option but to hire a private auditor for that. So in years ago, when we went to this, he did it as a package, did them both at the same time. I'll let you add to that, but that's.
So I will add this to that. The finance director at the city of Rogers used to work for Legislative Audit. That was, that's where she got into accounting. She's now the financial director at the city of Rogers. Guess who the city of Rogers uses for their Legislative Audit? Not the freebie, for the same reasons. She said they're, they are not protecting the city. They're, they're looking for theft, yes, and that, that's a great protection. But just like when we, when we get into these ARPA funds and how are we moving that from one account to another? That's, that is, it is nice to have somebody who can say, yes, if you do it like this, it will meet the requirements of governmental accounting. So, but to that point, she worked there and she doesn't use them. And she didn't have anything necessarily bad to say about them, other than the fact that it's a very limited scope that they're doing in their audit.
But twenty twenty is due this month?
Yes.
So how do we get two years behind? Because actually, we are. I understand sick family, but two years behind?
So he's been doing two years of time. I don't know if you remember the last time we got him, he did two years. And that's typically what he does, is two years of time. So last summer would have typically been when we would have gotten eighteen, nineteen. And he, that's when he's had a failing issue that he's gotten behind for. So that's what he's finishing now.
I remember when we were eight years behind.
Yeah.
Everybody remember that?
Yeah.
The whole, the whole city council, we got invited down to Little Rock to get their wrist spanked or whatever. The whole, the whole council had to load up and go to Little Rock. And at that time, he wasn't giving it to you, he had a health problem.
All right, so we're, we're moving on. Thanks, thanks for asking for the floor.
Kennedy.
He caught us up from that.
So yes.
Hey.
This discussion's up here. Hey, that's enough.
I'm out of here.
Good.
Hey.
Don't be disorderly. It usually hits you every three years.
Yeah, so we, he is behind. He typically does two years. What do we pay for that, Christie?
One department is seven thousand, and one's five. I, I think the city pays seven and a half more this time.
Yeah. Which is cheap. It's extremely cheap for audit.
It's a good deal, believe me, if you do it.
It's more protective, I'll say that. It is more expensive, there's no doubt about it. Any other questions on that?
But he's going to get us caught up.
I have been in constant, and I say constant, every other month, whatever, the whole time. I mean, he's kept me updated on what's going on. I send reports through email and stuff instead of him coming down like he does. And he did come down, he's got the paperwork that he needs from here. But I also continue to send him stuff so that he can get the report better.
Because I'm also kind of thinking, once we got the, the letter sent to us, you know, that was kind of scary because it's like they're making sure we are, that we know about it.
Exactly.
You see what I'm saying?
Call or something, say, I'm just going to get those.
I actually meant to go back and look at tape because I have told you guys we were behind.
You didn't say when to get the weather.
Well, I didn't know we were getting the weather. You guys got the letter before I did, we got the weather.
Who was the first one to text you when they got the weather?
Yeah, you were. And he's with about ten minutes actually. Someone else just let me this. So, but I, that's common practice when a city gets behind for them, just send that to all the elected officials. You don't need to know that.
And.
It's not obviously anything that we're trying to hide, or we know it's behind, or trying to get caught up. It's important to get caught up.
Yeah. But I would say that's why you're giving this every month. Because we, we take it for granted a lot of times, but as a board, that's exactly our job, is to make sure that the money's going where it's, where it's supposed to be going. The money's going where it's, where it's supposed to be going. City of Farmington may have dealt with a little bit of that, uh those boards can get in trouble for for not staying on top of things.
Yes.
Which is why you guys get the letter. Yeah, so. Are we behind, yes, should we be this far behind, no, we shouldn't.
Happens.
Are we getting a good deal out of out of June, yeah, we are. If you, Christie, a lot of times brings stuff to us, asks us to vote on it, one way or the other, because she knows if we don't, he's gonna throw it back. And he's gonna write a flag on our audit because of it, I mean, he's, he's far more picky about what's going on in the city than.
He keeps this one in line, he really does.
But if you guys want to discuss something else, we can certainly discuss it.
I'd just like to not get another letter, so I'm, I wanted them caught up ASAP.
I I agree, if we're gonna pay him twelve grand, we shouldn't be getting letters.
I had literally talked to Jim within days of get, of those letters going out. But as soon as I got him the next, or as soon as you guys got him, the next morning, I forwarded one to Jim and like, I know, we talked about this, but just so you know, so. He's very aware and he is working on it and I, I do have confidence that we'll have those soon.
What do you have, Tom?
When you go down there, and some of you were, were down there, because I was down there. When you know where every dime in your city is, where it came from, where it sits and where it goes, um you don't have a problem. Uh getting the the little packet to them on time is, they'd like it, but this is not the letter you would get if they really had a problem. You wouldn't get that, hey, get your audit, this this city is. So far beyond, I'd say ninety-five to a hundred percent of the cities in this state, as for knowing. Where every dime in the city is and and being responsible with it, if you guys went down there, it'd be, get an award, it wouldn't be because you were in trouble.
It's not what that letter said.
Tell them, yeah, but we've been down, we were down, we saw people that had money in literal ground paper bags, uh while we were down there, so. So we don't have that problem.
Does anyone else have any other business? No? So Mayor's comments, we've already stressed this, uh I think at least a half dozen times, uh Planning Commission has a public hearing. On Thursday, uh concerning rezoning uh eighty-five Main Street, uh spoke to many of you about uh. What we needed to have in that lease, Tom is working that up, uh so if we get a rezone, if we move forward, we'll get that lease. Uh in front of the council, uh for approval on it. Um as I mentioned, I won't be at the meeting, Walter, um. And we discussed the planning and future land use. I let Blair and Tracy know that I would need to postpone and ask the mayor. That was all I had.
Mayor, at the risk of Colonel Collins putting one right between my eyes, um. This document, this future land use, it it needs something, and what it needs is a thing we were talking about months ago, it needs to know. Needs to be informed by what they, this party, because of what your constituents tell you, this city wants to be. What what character do you want to preserve, not just, I don't want something in my backyard, but but what. But what you, what what is the, what's the lifestyle you wanna, that you like, right? What is, what is it you like about living here, or was it you want to make sure that your kids and grandkids can enjoy about living here? Everything changes, it'll never stay the same, but is there a characteristic, is there something about this place? And if if so, write a paragraph or two, because the Planning Commission has to refer to this document when they consider a rezone. Because this document sort of says, here's how we see the future, and here's how we see things happening. And if it, and they'll look at that plan and they'll go, okay, what you want to do, property owner in this request. Is in accordance with what we sort of envisioned for the city, or it's not, and if it's not, why not? Is it because of city, things change that we anticipate, or is it because you're way outside the character of what this would would be? The best use of this land would be, and so just having the categories is great, and Juliette has no peer in the way she does this work. And as cheaply as she does it, but having uh some text to this would be nice. And and they can't just make it up by, you know, because when you fill the room with torches and pitchforks, all you get is what we don't want, you know? And but but why don't you want it, what is it that you, you know? It's not just lot by lot, you know, but it's, what about this town? And uh and I I really think you guys need to spend time, or or just submit something to Planning Commission, give them a hand, you know? Give them something to go on, show up at a meeting and just say what it is so they can get that into a document, Juliette will do that, she will. Synthesize that into a document, but I mean.
And and Tom, uh we're gonna, we're gonna get it in a minute, but. I would just say, so something that that I have thought about and and been, I guess, pondering on is. Um I've told everyone that I've read some history of West Fork, uh and we are comfortable with where West Fork is right now, that's what we know. But if you think back where West Fork was, um and you look at our mural, you look back and, you know, we were known for having a canning facility down here. You know, that's, that's heavy industrial right in the middle of town, um so I I just say all that to say that the city has morphed. Um at one time, this was, you know, we were kind of a hub down here that was leading the way, and then we went through a lull. Uh that we're potentially still in a little bit of a lull, uh but but the economy's trying to drag us out of.
Well, look at Winslow, look what Winslow used to be and what it is now.
That's right, and so that's.
You know.
That's why it's so important for us to start that process.
Lost your school, whatever that.
Yeah.
That's where we don't want to be.
Yeah.
But but we used to have a three-story hotel in town, uh we don't have anything over over two stories, other than maybe the Opry, and I don't know if that's over two stories or not. Is that a good thing, is it a bad thing, but my point is, this used to be a pretty, pretty booming little spot right here where we're currently sitting. Um and and would we, would we allow that to come in today? If somebody wanted to to build something, a building this size, uh for mixed use like it used to be? Would we allow them to build that over on the other side of the block? I don't know, no, nobody's asked to do it yet, but but it is one of those things that we need um to consider. Uh we we do have somebody talking about multi-stories, uh four or five stories. Uh is it gonna come, I don't know, but it's it's good to have those discussions and know if it does.
We're about to fire trucks.
This is where we want it? Or we don't even want to have that discussion, but we need that direction, do we, do we have the discussion, do we put it?
Need something to cover.
Look, you have, but why, why not, is the question, why do you want the three-story or the four-story, or why don't you? You know, here's what you guys have from the outside, um. One of the most attention-getting libraries in the region, not just the county. Uh by far, the the most unusual fire department, the the largest area, the most volunteers, the most responses from the volunteers. You can go to any city, the volunteers will rank in the hundreds, who shows up when there's an alarm, maybe one, two or three, that's it. Um you uh you have, uh you know, I mean, your police department now is 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 supports the community instead of. Watches the community, people buy bikes for each other, um you know, it is, it is unusual place, it really is. You guys might not know it because you live here, but uh figuring out what that character came from and how to preserve it would be, you know, a nice idea. I'm sorry, soapbox, Mayor.
No, I could go on with that.
On and on and on.
Did you have anything to add, I kind of cut you off.
No, no, I I mean Winslow used to be booming, and then they didn't want anything moving in.
Yep.
And they lost everything.
Yeah, they did.
Including people, they're down to three hundred and forty people, no school.
Schools, people leave.
Well, we've, we've been, over the last few decades, known as a town that didn't want any growth, didn't want anything. Yeah, I personally don't like that.
And and some of the dilemma is, how much of it do we want, right? The the problem is, it's feast or famine with it, right? It's hard to, it's hard to say, well, we'll, we'll take twenty-five houses a year and get anybody to take us serious, right? It's either everybody wants to come down here and start throwing, throwing up hammers, you know, hammering a nail in, or or nobody does.
And sports, nobody, nobody runs sports like, I mean, I I know that Farmington has the military-industrial sports complex, but I mean, as far as just. Neighborhood sports where everybody, you know, gathers out there like the way they do, it it's, that's not easy to put on. Go to the towns around here, it's not easy to do.
And we've got the the disc golf course, and realistically. There are people, there are groups of disc golfers that are here on a monthly basis in West Fork. That are coming from Bella Vista and Rogers because of the quality that it was made. And, yeah, we don't like all those people sometimes at Riverside, but you know what, they're buying their. Lunch meat, they're buying their sodas and whatever else they want to buy.
Yes.
At, oh, Hunggass Good Gravy, at Harps, in a general, and I mean, they're, they're spending the money here, they are. But if we don't, if we don't grow, we're gonna become Winslow.
So I will tell you, one of you guys said something about a fire truck, I found out today that we had the opportunity to buy a ladder truck. For four thousand dollars, and we turned it down.
What was wrong with it?
Nothing.
And when, and when was that?
Uh I guess it would have been about eight years ago.
Okay.
So you were there then?
No, sir, no, sir.
Month before.
It may have been, may have been a little bit longer, it was before Mark was here, or before Mark was chief.
Yes.
Fayetteville offered us one uh for four thousand.
Oh my goodness.
So I say that to say that there are opportunities, I I was kind of concerned, what is that gonna, you know, if we do have to have something like that, what is that gonna cost us? A million and a half if we buy a new one.
Yeah.
Uh I don't think we're in the market for that.
We've got a way to here and a half to get it.
Yeah, true.
Well, you still have mutual aid though, right?
That's right, that's exactly right.
Yes, we do.
So anyway, all right, John.
I'm like a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no, we are adjourned.